Councilmember Meringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truus.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
Mayor Maas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, councilmember JR Vanderwall will be giving the invocation, and we're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, JR.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, let me first say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, and for the ability to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to assemble here and the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. I pray that as we are gathered here tonight, you may instill in us the ability to fully promote peace and order and justice. I'm asking you, you would graciously grant upon us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare of the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, a confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work in harmony even when there may be disagreement, and for personal peace and the lives and joy in our tasks. We are thankful for those that protect us and keep us safe and have fought for our freedoms that we have today. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and would benefit everyone that lives and works in and around our beautiful city of Granville. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and of his mercy, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, JR. Appreciate that. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Steenstra.
Motion?
Support. Steenstra.
Motion and support. Any discussion? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Maas.
Yes. You have before you the minutes from our last meeting, three weeks ago, August 24. You've had a chance to read those over. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Steenstra.
Support.
Support. Motion and support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out in particular on those? And it's pretty expensive. Good job, Marcy. Okay, seeing no comments or corrections. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Maas.
Yes. Tonight, we have bills in the amount of $453,780.31. Ken, before we open it up for questions, are there any bills that you'd like to point out and make special mention of? Oh, Ken, I can't hear you. Sorry. Can you hear me? You got it. Now we can.
Okay. I do have a couple of comments on the invoices for the council before you approve tonight. Wanted to call your attention to the invoice that is to Intout Construction, or I'm sorry, Inout Concrete. It's our city's concrete vendor. We work with them on an annual basis to complete concrete repairs of sidewalk approaches, curves, and gutters in the city. And you've got a large invoice tonight, $66,772, and that reflects the annual effort of the city to continually work to improve, especially our sidewalk system. We inspect a segment of the community every year, and in the case of 2020, Intout has just completed nearly 5,000 feet of sidewalk replacement. Those invoices show up on page four, five, and seven of your invoice list under various funds, major and local streets primarily, and also the non-motorized portion. And then on page six of the invoices, $140,813 to NutraGrow. That is the sludge hauling and land application of our bio-soluble residuals at the Clean Water Plant. The earlier part of this year, I think, council saw through the Clean Water Plant reports that the tank out there was very, very close to full, and there was some wetness in the spring that prevented us from emptying that previous to the season for planting. But now that we've gotten to the end of it, a great deal was hauled in August, over 2.5 million gallons, and those were land applied to farm fields at the cost I mentioned. So they were able to actually completely empty the tank, clean it out, and put us in good position for going forward from here. But those two bills are over $200,000 of the $450,000 total. And as far as the breakdown tonight, only about 23% were general fund. The rest were in the various utility and enterprise funds of the city. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Great. Questions for Ken on any of the bills? Okay, I don't see any. Is there a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $453,780.31?
So moved. Steenstra.
Motion?
Support. Truus.
Support. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Steenstra.
Yes.
Okay. And Mayor Maas.
Sorry. Sorry, Marcy.
That's okay. And Mayor Maas.
Yes. Great. Time for public comment. And the first public comment we're going to have is Brian Quist from Kent Communications Incorporated, talking about Track My Ballot, a very timely thing. So we're going to learn about tracking ballots. Brian, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, I really appreciate you being, letting me be here tonight. A little story to tell you about how we came up with this product. So I own a company called KCI, Cat Communications. Probably see our vans running around. We pick up mail from the city already, as we have for the last few years. And when that pandemic hit, I was in quarantine at home and watching the elections in Wisconsin, thinking, we can do a lot better than that in Michigan. And being a printing and mailing company, I thought, you know, I bet we could mail ballots for the clerks across Michigan. So I went down that path, and I ran into a dead end. Ballots are just too big to print with my current equipment, and to get equipment in in that timeframe just wasn't going to help. But as I talked to clerks, I talked about the ability to track mail so that we could run a really clean election where we could see all the ballots going to the voter, and the voter could turn around and send them back, and we could track them through the post office using what's called informed visibility barcodes, the mailing barcodes that go on the pieces, but they have a little twist. And that is the post office actually can track it on every single machine. So within about a four-week period, I figured out how to work this, started talking to the clerks, and we were able to track mail for several municipalities during the primary, specifically Lansing and Walker were two of our early adapters. And we worked out a few kinks, but it really went well. And so now for the general election, we're talking to municipalities across the state. We have about 20 signed up, all the way from, so I'm in Oakland County, Lansing again, and then quite a few here in Kent. So we're pretty excited about it. We think it's going to really help the voting public feel secure about mailing ballots. So I got a very quick PowerPoint I'm going to show you, just a couple minutes here, show, share a couple of slides with you if I can do that. Let's see. If I can share my screen. So this is our, this is us. This is our logo. And... Let me see if I can. Okay. Basically, how it works is we, we pick up through ballots after, first of all, we give the clerks special barcodes to put on the return envelopes. We pick up your ballots every day that we're mailing. We, after the clerk, after Marcy approve, process them for us. We run them through our big sorting machine, which puts a barcode on it. It's also trackable. And we're able to merge all the data because we're reading some information on the outside of the envelope. We, our machine sorts 40,000 ballots an hour. And we'll be, like I said, mixing all the clerks together that we do work for to get the lowest possible postage rate. So another big benefit is we're actually mailing them at 18.4 cents a piece. If you were to mail them yourselves at first class, they'd be 65 cents. So it's a big savings. We run those at the lower postage rate until a couple of weeks prior to the election, and then we'll flip to first class to make sure we get the best possible delivery. But again, we'll be able to see them and track them all the way from the voter and from the voter back. We have Marcy access to our tracking website. She'll be able to look up each piece by voter ID. So if someone calls and says, hey, you mailed me my piece. I don't have it. Where is it? She could type in their voter ID, and it might say, oh, you know what? That was delivered two weeks ago. You know, look on your, look in your desk, see if you can find it. We've certainly seen those examples. But, you know, sometimes they're just lost. We had a couple cases in the primary, one in which we actually was, we were able to identify a lost tray of mail for Lansing. They had 94 ballots in it. Just before the election, we were able to digitally spoil those ballots, or the clerk was, so they couldn't be voted, and we were able to re-mail with a note saying, hey, your ballots were lost in the mail. Vote these, bring them in on election day to have them counted. So those are the kind of things that we, stories that are really, really hearten us to know that it's making a difference. This is not only a business opportunity for us, but it's really a passion project of mine, and hopefully using the, you know, the public-private partnership that West Michigan is so famous for. But anyway, then the clerk will be able to see all the reports, and at the end of the election, be able to create an archive. So if there ever a question, even a year later, saying, what happened to these certain ballots, they can actually go in the archive and see all the scans, all the delivery scans of those ballots. The other part of our system is the voter gets information. We're actually able to send the voter an email or a text message if they have the data on file with the QPF, the state system. The voter will get this message, and it's a little webpage that's unique to them. And as they're mailing, say, vote and send it back, they'll be able to see the piece travel back to the clerk. Of course, we are not seeing any voting information. We're only reading barcodes on the outside of the envelope. So there's no privacy concerns with how the mail, how the voter voted, for sure. And yeah, that's pretty much our system. I don't know if you have any questions. Hopefully, that was short and sweet and to the point.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you. Questions for Brian about a, what I think is a pretty cool system? Tim?
Yeah, I just have a comment, and I think we'll talk about this later. But I, in my last job, worked with KCI for five years and have nothing but good things to say about the organization. And I think this is a pretty cool idea you came up with, Brian, and I think it'll be very helpful to our city.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul?
I don't have any questions. I just say, I just see a lot of positives to it. I'm really, really impressed with it. I think it's a, it's a great idea, and I love the fact that the voters can track their own ballots, you know, back and forth, and see that information or get notification, you know, just like, like Amazon does. So yeah, it's very, very 21st century. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And it won't, it's not the last you're going to hear from us. I'm going to mail those ballots one of these days.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, before we open it up for further public comment, I asked Marcy, could you just run us through, for those people who've joined us tonight, either by phone or by Zoom, just how they can raise their hand and get recognized under public comment?
If you're joining us by Zoom, we're utilizing the raise your hand method. If you're joining us by phone, pressing star six will toggle your mute on and off. Pressing star nine will raise your hand in the meeting, letting me know that you have a question. If all else fails, raise your hand, move them around. I'll see you. We'll call on you.
Great. Thanks, Marcy.
We do have Carolyn Frederick.
Great. Carolyn, welcome.
Good evening. Two things. First of all, the track ballot proposal. I certainly hope you folks approve of it. It's something I had actually talked to Marcy about at the primary election time, because I'd heard about it, and I got more information on it. In today's, unfortunately, with all the misinformation that's going out, I think, I think we need to do it. Sad to say. The other thing is that you do have the ordinance on the anti-discrimination before you this evening. I again urge you to approve of it. It's a long time coming. Past time to get it done. It's not perfect, but it's better than anything we've got to this point. Thanks.
Great. Carolyn, thanks. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else like to address the council? Just electronically, raise your hand, or actually physically, if that's, yeah. Mr. Brock?
We have Kim.
Hi. Yeah, I am coming. We would just like to...
I'm sorry. I got to interrupt. Sorry, Kim. I apologize. If you could, just state your name and address, too, so then Marcy's got that down, just in case we got a follow-up. Sorry for interrupting. Thank you, Kim.
Yep. So my name is Kim Zidema, and my address is 3665 Earl Avenue here in Granville. And I would just like to address, or I guess make people aware, figure out what we need to do with the traffic that we have going on in our neighborhood. You probably know I'm a couple blocks down from South Elementary School, and I'm also working from home. And so I spend from 7:00 AM until 5:00, sitting in front of my window, watching the traffic go extremely fast. Now that school has started, I'm very worried about all of the kids that walk this neighborhood, because we are not on a bus route. I'm concerned with the Yellowstone and the Earl four-way stop sign down there. Many people blow through that stop sign. So I just, I guess I'm curious as to what we need to do to try to get somebody in to monitor the speed limits on these local roads back here and enforce the stop sign that many people just blow through.
Great. Thanks for the comment, Kim. I see, you know, I live in that neighborhood, and I see JR kind of nodding. It's sad, too. So we get what you're talking about. Ken, what, what can be done to maybe calm traffic down or get some enforcement out there?
A couple of things, actually. We do enforce, our officers are through that area and all the neighborhoods on a regular basis. In fact, they're stopping in daily at elementary schools. So they're, they're in the vicinity. One thing that we can and will do is to, sometimes people need to be reminded of their speed. They get a little complacent. They don't look at their speedometer. They go, the speed is comfortable for them, and that might not be the same speed that's comfortable for the residents on that street or the folks walking on it. So the city does have a radar speed sign, and we move that around as we have residents that alert us to issues in their neighborhoods. And I think I saw that Chief Anglin was on this call. Police Chief Anglin, he can, through his officers, take steps to get that radar display board out there, and it gives a visual cue to drivers, gives them their speed exactly, and it flashes if they're above the speed limit, cautions them to slow down. We've been, as we do every year when school starts, we've been moving that around already this fall. And so we can get that out there, and sometimes that has a very noticeable impact on neighborhood speeds. If there is an issue that's recurring out there, the police department can also do some directed patrol activities in that area. And when they do that, they have officers on, on site, and they will do that for a period of time, making sure things like speed enforcement and stop sign enforcement is ongoing. And what we usually get out of that as well is some data with the police department sharing just what percentage is actually speeding and where those problems are. So those are the couple of most immediate things that we can do for, for you, Kim, and your neighborhood. Be happy to have Chief Anglin follow up on that or comment now if he'd like to.
I've already been texting back and forth with the deputy chief, and we'll make arrangements to get the speed board out and put out a directed traffic assignment for that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate your comments. Great. Anybody else like to address the council? Marcy, I see Mr. Brock is raising his hand.
Go ahead, Nick.
Good. Good evening. Thank you for feeling my comment. My name is Nick Brock, and I live at 3959 Henry Street. And I would like to provide a brief five-minute comment concerning the public forum on policing that was held in Wedgewood Park on August 31. It was during this forum that Police Chief Anglin remarked that the majority of Granville's residents are white. And according to the 2019 population estimates from the United States Census Bureau, this information is accurate, with 85% approximately identifying as white, 8% identifying as Hispanic or Latino, 4% identifying with two or more races, and about 1% identifying as black or African-American alone. And then within this context, I asked Chief Anglin if the Granville Police Department is currently tracking ethnicity data during traffic stops. He replied that they are not. Additionally, I asked if the department has the capability to track this data. Chief Anglin responded that the vendor who collects and analyzes this policing data does have the capability of tracking this data, thus suggesting, at least to me, that they have the capability to do the same. Subsequently, I would like to suggest that the Granville Police Department consider reforming their current practice of not collecting ethnicity data for traffic stops and begin to do so in order to address statistical information that identifies racial disparities within communities across the nation and even within Kent County and Grand Rapids. And I'd like to just spend maybe two and a half minutes expounding on this, if you will. So a study from Stanford University that began in 2015 and was published in July of this year, popularly known as the Stanford Open Policing Project, found that after assessing a data set of 100 million traffic stops across 21 states and included data such as ethnicity, that there was, quote, "persistent racial bias," end quote, by police officers towards black and Hispanic drivers. This racial bias resulted in a disproportionate percentage of traffic stops and searches of these groups when compared to their white driver counterparts. Based upon the whole of their conclusions, they suggested that there is, quote, "value of policy interventions to mitigate these disparities," end quote. And akin to this, a study commissioned by the city of Grand Rapids into traffic stops, conducted by the Grand Rapids Police Department from 2013 to 2015, found that police officers were twice as likely to stop black drivers than non-black drivers. Based upon this study, Grand Rapids Police Chief Eric Payne commented that he was committed to, quote, "reviewing and addressing disparities in traffic stops and arrests, and working to increase transparency and become the most trusted police department in the country." So summarily, I want to ensure to the highest degree possible that our neighbors who look differently from the majority of us, those who are residents of Granville and those who transit through this community, receive fair and equitable treatment by those who have sworn to serve, protect, and provide a safe environment for all of us. And to be clear, I am not accusing the Granville Police Department of racial bias in traffic stops, nor am I suggesting that the Granville Police Department mimic the Grand Rapids Police Department. I am, however, suggesting that our civil servants and this governing body continuously strive to meet and exceed the goals that are set forth by itself, which, quote, it says, "to provide high-quality personal and professional service to the citizens of Granville." And I'll conclude with this. And to this end, I strongly suggest reformation, adopting a policy of tracking ethnicity data for all traffic stops, then evaluating it after a set period of time to analyze how the Granville Police Department does interact with the single-digit percentage groups of people that have nationally and regionally experienced racial bias by police officers. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
Great. Thank you, Nick, for your comment. Paul, I don't know if you want to respond to that at all. I think it's an interesting concept of tracking the traffic stops. Now, I know we have a lot of visitors who come into Granville. So the percentages, you know, of the people who actually live in Granville, who are not, non-white, might be different than the people who visit during the day. Paul, do you have any comment you, you want to make on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are looking at ways to track this data, and we'll be more than willing to put it forward. There are a couple issues with trying to obtain this data. You know, it's going to involve a judgment call by the police officer to assign a category. Not every person's racial background is readily obvious based on site. In like you referred to as well, with our huge retail corridor, we service much greater population than our 16,000 residents. I have been talking to the state police. They just recently put out a new transparency page where they have been tracking that information, as I said, at the public forum for traffic citations. That is trackable in software. However, it is not working for us, and we're working with the vendor to get that. I'm trying to find out from the state police how they are actually assigning the race identity on the traffic stops and how they're tracking that. Currently, we do not have a statistical program in place to be able to do that, but it is something we are actively working on.
Good. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Nick, for the comment, background, and answer just from. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to make public comment to the council tonight?
We have Jacqueline Steen.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Termeere. I live at 3656 Alder, A-L-D-E-R. I just would like to echo what Carolyn has brought up and encourage the council to pass the anti-discrimination that you have before you. The comments that I've seen on our city's Facebook page, on news items, articles that we've seen indicate to me that we need to have an anti-discrimination policy for this town. We just do. It's high time, and I encourage the council to approve.
Great. Thanks for joining us tonight, Jacqueline. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to make a comment to council? Yes, sir. Marcy, if you...
Yep.
My name is Jason Modis. Kelly's my...
Hi, Kelly.
We live at 4332 41st Street Southwest. So we are, well, I am going to be reading a letter that a group of us, a number of us are in this Zoom meeting, but that a group of us have developed in the past week or so in order to show our support for the anti-discrimination ordinance.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. "We, the undersigned, unanimously support you for taking a leadership role among local governments and considering a nondiscrimination ordinance. By transparently drafting this policy and allowing the opportunity for public input, you demonstrate concern for all people, including minority and marginalized groups, and help everyone appreciate the importance of the issue. Such a policy would also benefit the community economically by making our city a more attractive location for national and international businesses. We support the anti-discrimination ordinance because fairness, justice, and equality should be ensured for every citizen." We support the anti-discrimination ordinance because fairness, justice, and equality should be ensured for every citizen. People need to feel safe. It creates accountability. Clear definitions help prevent problems and misunderstandings. Written provisions are tangible and actionable. Other considerations include: The creation of a welcoming community is signaled. Helping people to respect differences is enriching and empowering. Contributing to the well-being of the community is elevated. It inspires trust that the government is looking out for the interests of all people. Our community can be leaders in this area. Our local government is in the best is in the best position to understand the unique character of this community. Acceptance, inclusion, and respect for all benefits, everyone. We thank and encourage you to continue working toward what you know is the best interest of the people and to continue thinking of ways to make this a better community for everyone. Respectfully submitted, nineteen of your Granville community members." Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate your comments. Thanks for joining us tonight. Anybody else like to address the council? Please let Marcy know or actually raise your hand or digitally. Martha Vermeulen, welcome, Martha.
Okay.
Here we go.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you. Granville does so many things right. I'm so proud to be a citizen here. Just this past weekend, we had our mayor and three council members and a whole bunch of volunteers walking around, getting all wet in the creek and cleaning it up. That that would be Buck Creek. The trees are being planted. You know, I'm I'm just a tree hugger and I'm very excited about that aspect. But I'm also extremely pleased that our council has stepped forward and is seriously considering passing a nondiscrimination ordinance. I know that there is language at the state and federal level, but there is something really powerful about a community stepping forward and saying everyone is welcome and inclusive. And I forgot to give you my address, Marcy. So anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak and considering this tonight, I strongly encourage you, and I think Eric, I speak for you too. He feels the same way.
He usually does.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Martha and Eric. Thanks for all your hard work arranging the Buck Creek cleanup last weekend and your hard work. Thank you. And everything else you do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else like to address the council? Just raise your hand or let Marcy know.
Yep. Next, we have Chrissy.
Good evening, Chrissy.
Hi, Mayor Moss. I'm Chrissy Evans. I live at four six four one Blackfoot Drive Southwest. I want to echo what Martha said about loving this community, loving how open this council is to hearing our voices, loving that we have this anti-discrimination ordinance on the table and that the city will hopefully be a leader for that in in West Michigan. And thank you, Jason, too, for for reading the letter. In that regard, I do, this is more of an invitation. There's a small group of us who are really hoping to encourage a really inclusive, tolerant, cohesive community in Granville and want to create a new collaborative unity project designed for all ages. The Unity Project of Granville will strengthen our community by celebrating the unique diverse lives of our residents through the arts. And we are seeking collaboration and support from the families, schools, churches, businesses, and city leaders of Granville. By joining together, we can create an event that will support a cohesive community that embraces, respects, and accepts all people regardless of gender, race, belief, sexual identity. And if you're interested in being a part of this project at all, I just invite you to email us at unityprojectmi@gmail.com. So thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Could you give us that email address? Unity Project? Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us tonight, too. Anybody else, Marcy? Anybody else like to address the council?
No.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Next item on the agenda is under ordinances and resolutions. And we have proposed ordinance number three one two. That's the anti-discrimination ordinance. Is there a motion to remove that from the table?
So both. For.
Motion and support. Marcy, could you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember truth?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Now, before we open it up for general discussion, I know that Randy Cracker, city attorney, has made some changes and then gone back. So Randy, do you want to just bring us totally up to speed on where we're at with the draft of ordinance number three one two and what changes were made and and then, yeah, change back and so on?
Yes, Mayor. There were some good comments from citizens at the last meeting and through emails during the last three weeks. Some of those comments were incorporated then into this final draft of the ordinance. So for instance, on the first page under the policy itself, there was a language that talked about handicap being one of the protected classes. And there was some suggestion that perhaps that wasn't the best word to use. And that instead we should use the word disability. That has been changed in both section one point one A and B. So instead of handicap, it now reads disability. In that same, in the same sections, there was a change to add the the term gender identification, gender expression, which is a subset really of gender identity. Some of the, some of the case law suggests that that's included within that gender and gender identity term. Others suggest it's separate. But it was suggested that it would be inclusive to add that category as a subset of gender identity. So we did that. We also added education as a basis that we wouldn't discriminate on the basis of education. That's consistent with the Civil Michigan Civil Rights Commission template. And then finally, the original ordinance talked about marital status. The template contemplates instead of using the term marital status, that we use familial status. And and so that change has been made. And then down below, under the exceptions to discrimination under one point three, exceptions under A, there's a slight deletion of of a phrase there that was based on comments by the Reverend Lafarge, which I thought were good comments. And so that that change was made to strike some language under one point three per N A. Then on the second page, there is under one point three H, there was a an exception to discrimination based on the use of lavatories and locker room facilities on the basis of sex. We simply expanded lavatories and locker room facilities to include changing rooms and restrooms, just to be a little more inclusive of what was included within that exception. And then under J, having to do with instructional programs, athletic events, athletic teams, et cetera. It was originally indicated that it was not discrimination to discriminate, for lack of a better word, on the basis of age or sex with regard to athletic events and programs, et cetera. And I had added additional categories there, but in upon reflection, that was really a mistake. It should have been left alone. And so it's back to age or sex, which was the original language used in that section. And finally, under one point four interpretation, there was simply an error in the citation with regard to the First Amendment rights protected by section one point four of the state constitution, out one point twenty five, Article one twenty five. It should have been Article one, section four, which is now reflected in this this draft. And I believe that's it. Yes, that's it, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the clarification.
And most of the, most of the, most of the modifications are really based on citizen comments, the civil rights template. And those are really the primary basis for the changes.
Great. I'm glad you pointed that out, that some of the changes were made in response to citizen comments, in case anybody ever wonders whether it really makes a difference, that they come to meetings and and speak out or send us emails. And fact is, yes, it does make a difference and and sometimes comments are incorporated if that if that works. So thank you. All right, council, what's your pleasure in discussion on the nondiscrimination ordinance? Tim?
I just want to clarify with Randy that the language in the ordinance, wherever it said handicap, has been now changed to disability?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Randy Cracker or otherwise, just general discussion questions on this ordinance?
I'll I'll jump in, Mayor Moss, and just just say, thanks, Randy, for making some of those changes. I think I think we got very good input from the community on this one, and they had some good finds that we were able to go into and tweak the ordinance a little bit to make it exactly what we needed to say to do what it's supposed to accomplish. And I think, you know, we said most of what what we need to say is council members last meeting, but full support of this, and I'm glad that we were able to to get it to this point and excited to see it approved.
Great. Thanks, Andy. Any other council members like to make a comment? Chair?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Andy said. Totally totally in agreeance. I know that I had, one of my kind of catchphrases the last couple of weeks have been, we cannot let perfect be the enemy of good. And this is good. It's nearly perfect. It might be perfect. I don't know. I'm sure somebody will find a word that doesn't sit well with them. But I think I think I think we're we're on track. Randy, thank you so much for all the effort you put into this. And also especially citizens for input, advice, encouragement. Grateful for for that. And that's what makes what makes this so so special. So thank you.
Any other council member like to make a comment? Justin?
Yeah, I'm very happy to hear the support we've received from the public comment today and from those comments that were submitted to us overwhelmingly through email. Maybe one suggestion for change that I would like to ask the council to give some thought to here would be in section H. We have lavatories, restrooms, locker facilities, or changing rooms on the basis of sex. And I know that there is a lot of data that suggests that people who are transgender feel apprehension about using the restroom. They experience discrimination. They experience assaults in restrooms. So I would really like to see us strike that exception from the ordinance leaving only lavatory or leaving only locker rooms and changing rooms in place.
There are council member thoughts? I, over the weekend, had a chance to take a look at some articles. One of them I thought was kind of interesting was called "The Business Case for Diversity and Nondiscrimination Ordinances" that indicated that at least four years ago, of the twenty eight Fortune five hundred companies that were headquartered in Michigan, at least twenty three of them had nondiscrimination policies, including sexual orientation. Companies were General Motors, Ford, Dow, DuPont, Whirlpool, Spartan, NAST, Kellogg, Stryker, Wolverine Worldwide, and Herman Miller. And then just out of curiosity, today I looked at one of the larger employers. Maybe it's the largest employee employer in in Kent County is Spectrum Health where Josh works, and they also have a nondiscrimination notice. So I, there's many reasons, I think, to be so many reasons to be supportive of nondiscrimination ordinance. And there's a business case to be made for it also. I'm curious on hearing other council member thoughts about Justin's suggestion in relationship to one of the, one of the exceptions about locker rooms, bathrooms. So Justin, you're suggesting section one point three H be changed to?
I would leave, oh, sorry, Mayor.
No, I'm sorry.
I would leave the locker room facility and changing room on the basis of sex as written, but add perhaps another subsection that says restricting the use of lavatories or restrooms on the basis of gender or gender identity.
Okay, so you'd add another one or you would just take that out of the exception? Because I know I had a conversation with somebody today and there was some concern about locker room facilities and changing rooms. So I think that would satisfy that concern, but I'm just wondering. So we would just strike those two words out of the exception then?
Yeah, I didn't know if if Randy could weigh in on that, but I want to ensure obviously that it is written in a way that it can be restricted based on gender or gender identity, so you don't have a a male entering a female restroom, but the opportunity for a transgendered female to enter a female restroom.
But not necessarily the locker room or the changing room?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, just remember, these are exceptions to what discrimination is. In other words, this is set up to say that these items are not, not considered to be discrimination. So remember, you're you're basically defining things that are not going to be considered to be discrimination because if it's discrimination, then it's in violation of the ordinance. So so these items under one point three are things that, if they occur, are not then deemed to be discrimination.
Right.
So, you know, you you can do it whatever you want as far as policy goes. We just remember that's the way the ordinance is set up in this section is really things that if if they occur are not considered to be discrimination, even though some people might think they should be.
Other council member comments or thoughts on either that possible change or anything else?
Yeah, I thought we had talked at the last meeting, actually, about changing the word sex, in particular in that section, to gender. I remember making that comment anyway, so I would certainly support making that change.
So the last word and sub one point three H?
An H, yeah, taking sex out and say and using gender instead.
Thoughts on that, Randy?
Then you would basically saying that someone who has a policy of indicating that restrooms are for sex only, for the, what I'll say is the correct sex, born, born sex would not be discrimination. And I guess if they had a policy that was allowed transgender folks to use the restroom of their choice, then that wouldn't be considered discrimination either. And I think that's where you're going, right? You you don't want that to be considered discrimination.
Right.
If they have that policy. So so I guess I guess we we can make that change if the council wishes to.
Council thoughts? Just to follow up on Justin's, oh, I'm sorry, Clem.
Yeah, going back to Justin's comment, would would Justin, would you say locker rooms and changing rooms on the basis of sex, but lavatories and restrooms on the basis of gender?
Gender identity, probably.
Gender.
Gender identity?
Slash gender identity, yes.
Okay, I can live with that.
Okay, can you explain, help me out here, explain that to me again, Tim or Justin?
That locker rooms and changing rooms would be on the basis of sex. And lavatories, restrooms would be on the basis of gender identity. Does that make sense Randy?
I think it does. It'd be easy enough just to make that change to that same section. Wouldn't have to add a new one, you could just expand upon that section to add those words.
Are you good with that Paul?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Other council member thoughts, comments on that or any other issue? Okay, is anybody? Looking to make a motion to approve ordinance number 312 as amended? And explained by Randy and recently?
So moved.
Supported, Steenstra.
Other council member comments before we take a vote? Okay. Think we're ready, I don't see anybody's hand going up? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
No.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Thank you council for your thoughtful consideration to what for some people, many people is a very difficult issue. And although there may be people who disagree with the vote that we just took, I can assure everyone that you gave it civil and careful thought. And I appreciate that, I think that says something about this council. Unlike other places, civility still rules here. So I appreciate that very, very much as, as mayor and as a resident of Granville, thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have some August reports, the Treasurers Report, the Fire EMS Report, and the Planning Commission September 2 minutes. We also have the appointment of an officer and employee delegates to the MERS annual meeting.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
How long have I been talking and nobody heard what I, maybe it doesn't matter? Y'all know, y'all know what's on the consent agenda. Okay, so we've got some reports there and proclamation for Constitution Week from the Daughters of the American Revolution. And also a couple purchase requests, two vehicles, two Chevy Tahos, and three Chevrolet Silverados. And there's memos in there, I don't know if Charlie or Paul wanted to make any comments on, on those purchase. But in the meantime, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved, Steenstra.
More Vanderwaal.
And support. Any questions for any of those items? You know what, Ken, do we have to specify who the delegates are to the MERS meeting?
I think the document that's in your packet actually has those names on it.
Yep, so it's Tammy Hartman is the officer delegate and Marcy is the alternate name, so.
Correct.
And Paul or Charlie, I don't know if you wanted to make any comments about the purchase of those five vehicles, you did a good memo, so.
No, no comment.
All right. Let's see, so we have a motion and support on that already, Marcy?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments on any item under the consent agenda? I don't see any, okay, Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes, Ken, City Managers' report.
First item on there is the authorization related to the presentation from KCI earlier. To proceed with implementing the ballot mailing service agreement. That would allow us to track those ballots for this coming general election. And I think you all understand from the presentation exactly how that works and how that could benefit us. And you've got a memo in your packet from the city clerk recommending that we follow that up. Marcy, do you want to address the cost a little bit?
Um, it wasn't a budgeted item for this year, however, I think from the comments I've heard and things that have been going on, I think that it's something that's worthwhile and think that we should do it. There's $1,200, actually there's $1,400, I was wrong about that. We get additional $200 to utilize towards this, so the cost will be decreased by another $200 even. So depending on which route we go, it could be 1,000, it could be 1,600, so. But there's enough in the election's budget to cover and we're excited to do it.
Great, so the request then, Marcy, is to enter into an agreement with Kent Communication for their ballot mailing and tracking service. And the amount is of course based on the number of ballots, so, but on another couple hundred dollar savings for us.
I did.
Oh, and great. All right, any questions for Marcy, otherwise is there a motion to approve entering into that agreement?
Support, Steenstra.
Motion to support, Josh had a question?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, it's a novel, novel service, it's a nominal cost. And I think it's a good thing that we can do for our community to help with maybe alleviate some anxieties or some concerns. And also from the clerk's office to help things run more efficiently. And give them the ability to track things a little more easily than what we have just with traditional mailing. So I think it's a good thing, but my question is, is this just a commitment for this one election in November? Kind of see how it goes and then there could be future opportunities to do the same thing. It's not a commitment for a specific period of time or anything, right? Okay, thank you.
Marcy, I've got a question, maybe there's no answer or no answer yet. But is, is this something that the federal government may be helping fund or would fund in the future? I mean, if there's a lot of concern about mail and ballots, this, I just wish that I would develop this idea and program. That's not like a great idea to me, so.
Yeah, there, there's some talk out there about some money that might be available, so.
Good, thanks.
I'm on it.
Oh, I, no, no question about that. Any other questions for Marcy on that? Otherwise we have motion and support to enter into the agreement with Kent Communication Incorporated. Marcy, could you call the roll please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Ken, next item, one of my favorite topics, columbariums.
Yeah, City Council, you members are all aware of the conversation we've had over a period of years. With regard to the Granville Cemetery and the investment that's already been made to acquire some adjacent property. Council studied the possibility of expanding to the south across Buck Creek. Can kind of abandon that because it was very, very expensive to bridge the floodplain there. But we do have a small area of expansion that we, was made available by purchase of a adjacent home and its yard. Two years ago now, and we've been working on how to develop that particular portion of the cemetery, which is the northeast corner adjacent to Prairie Street. As councils are aware, we have sold every site that's available to the city to this point. And so we really didn't have any options for current Granville residents or other people who might wish to have their final resting place be the Granville Cemetery. So much so that we've got a waiting list for folks who would like to, you know, get their name on burial spots. So in working on that particular expansion project, we put together with the help of our engineers a plan that would create some additional burial plots. But probably the most exciting thing is the inclusion for the first time ever of a columbarium option. Which are very nice, you've seen pictures of these granite monuments that are made for receiving human remains, human cremains. And we're at the point now where in Granville, better than 50% of the funeral services resulting cremation. So it'd be nice to be able to offer a new option for folks. And we have, with council's authorization, ordered the first one back in the late winter. It is about ready to ship. And that's going to create a lot of space for us to provide to residents for their, their remains and their loved ones. These are niches for two urns basically. But we're at a point now where we need to be ready to receive that first columbarium that was, that was ordered. And so Charlie Sunblad has been working with our concrete contractor to get a quote on them placing the required piers and foundation underneath, not just the spot for the initial columbarium, but actually the first two. And at this point, we're planning for three. And it makes sense to try to get two of those done in one shot. Just logistically and economically. So you've got a memo in your packet from Charlie that lays out the costs to do that work. And we do need to get it proceeding quickly because we do want to be in a position to receive that columbarium very shortly. We do have a contract with Intouch to do this kind of work and the quote is reasonable. This is not specifically a budgeted item, but it is part of the council's plan to use our fund that's been established for cemetery capital improvements to pay for the development of this particular space. And we've got plenty of resource in that fund to cover the expense that's projected at $10,875. So tonight we're asking for the council's authorization to have that concrete work done. And if that happens, I think very quickly you'll see the results of that on the ground. Followed by shortly thereafter, the installation of our first columbarium.
Great, questions for Ken on the concrete work for the columbariums? Okay, is there a motion to approve entering into a contract with Intouch Concrete? In the amount of $10,875 for the concrete slab work for the columbariums?
So moved. Or?
Motion and support? The other questions or comments? I think this is going to be a great project that gives people a good, good alternative to traditional burial. Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Andy Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Okay, Ken, anything else under City Managers' report? I see you have a note that we're going to be asked to. Adjourn to a closed session to discuss pending litigation. And I believe Randy's got some language specifically what we need for that, so. Let's do council member comments. JR, let's start with you tonight, unless Ken, I'm sorry, was there anything else?
Yeah, I'll just highlight a couple items in the council packet for your attention. Wanted to point out the photo that Marcy included of the new larger City Hall drive-up drop box. That's available for residents to deposit their ballot applications, ultimately their ballots. Payments to the city for taxes and utilities and other items of that nature. So we're glad to have the additional capacity, it has been an issue during COVID. A lot of people are taking advantage of that and we encourage it. But it's nice to have more space to accommodate that. And so that photo is in there, there also is a memo from the finance director. And Tammy has given you an update on a variety of COVID-related grant requests that the city has made to access funding that's been made available at the state and federal level. For various elements, everything from direct COVID expenses to the first responder hazard pay that council previously authorized an application for, to the public safety and public health payroll reimbursement program. So that's just there for your benefit, Tammy will update us as we get results back on those. And some are expected very, fairly shortly. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out the final resolution related to the 4th of July committee creation. There were some changes at the last minute before adoption, the last council meeting. And so the previous copy that you had received didn't reflect the actual approval. So what's in your packet now does in fact make those changes. And I wanted to make sure that every council member had the final version of that. Marcy has provided it directly to all the members of the Park and Rec Board. And asked or encouraged them to volunteer for that committee if they so choose. And we've also already publicized the mechanism for applying. If anybody is interested in serving on that committee, it's a big celebration, it's a big part of Granville every summer. And I know there's a lot of excitement for next year since we had to postpone this year. So if there's people out there who wish to volunteer to be part of that, it's an unlimited size committee, which is reflective of the size of the event. And there is information on our website about how to apply online for that. And US City Council will be making appointments to the actual board as soon as we can get there. Marcy told me today, we've already had several responses just over the weekend of folks interested in serving. And I know a big priority for council was trying to open this up to as many residents as possible. So we'd like to start, we're getting there and I just wanted to make sure you all saw that was in your packet and it didn't get lost in a shuffle of paper. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Ken, hey, council member comments, JR, start with you.
Yeah, just one thing I just want to note was, this past weekend was the 7th Annual Buck Creek Cleanup. And I know that under current circumstances, they've extended that to be from the 12th to the 19th. But I saw Mayor Moss was out there, council member Nordhook, council member Meringa, myself, my son was with the local Scouts BSA troop 292 from Granville. Of course, he shows up with waiters and he's the kid who ends up with his waiters full of water in the creek. But regardless, and I say, I think the Vermile has just left the group, but I, you know, kudos to Martha. And also, speaking of that, there's, it's not just last Saturday, I know Ms. Dykes sent out another one that she's doing a cleanup on Wednesday on Indian Mountains Drive. So there's other opportunities to get involved, not just last Saturday if you happen to miss that. So look around, keep your eyes open, there's lots of trash to be picked up unfortunately. And we got to keep those, those creeks and rivers clean. Had a great time on Saturday and graciously thankful to the mayor for providing a load of food. I think anybody whose kids were there ate plenty of Jimmy John sandwiches that night or that afternoon. So thank you for, for being part of that.
Great. Paul?
Yeah, just thanks, I, I appreciate how quickly we make it through difficult topics. Mayor mentioned that earlier and I just want to make mention of that too, this council really moves very efficiently. All voices are heard and respected and, and we just, we just move forward. So I really do appreciate that. And I appreciate that we renewed our commitment to making Granville a, you know, welcoming community tonight. That was, that was a big thing we did, so, thanks.
Thank you Paul. Tim?
Yeah, just thanks for a lot of good stuff happening. Marcy and Ken and the city staff, keep, keep making those grant requests, that's awesome. Matt, kudos for tweaking that home-based business ordinance and with the zoning board. Really excited about the new 4th of July team. Excited that we passed a nondiscriminatory ordinance tonight. And just want to give a shout out to Dorothy Kane for your. And just want to give a shout out to Dorothy Kane for your email on behalf of that whole group of people, summarizing so clearly, so well that we want to be an inclusive community where people feel safe and that our little community, Granville, can be one of the leaders. It was pointed out at the last meeting that very few communities have passed this, but we're one of them now, so kudos to Granville.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Tim. Andy?
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, those numbers, Ken and Marcy, about just a couple people already applying for the Fourth of July committee. I firmly believe, like I operate from a standpoint of abundance. I think there are a lot of people in our community who want to get more involved, who want to contribute to their town, who want to take pride in their town, and they just don't necessarily have a place that can fit their passions or their talents. And sometimes they don't know how to actually get involved. And so it was kind of fun having two areas that we knocked out in one week with the new website launching, along with this committee giving people more opportunities. And so it's great to see people responding already to that. And I'd love to see us continue to operate from that kind of a standpoint of getting more people involved. So yeah, good meeting tonight. You know, I can just reiterate the comments that you guys have all made. You know, it's great to see us moving in this direction of becoming an inclusive community, a cleaner community environmentally, and one that involves its citizens and that they can take pride in. That's it for me, Steve.
Great, thanks, Andy. Justin?
Right, I have a few things. First, I just want to reiterate what was said, particularly by JR on the Buck Creek Cleanup. It was a wonderful event. Thank you to all the volunteers and coordinators and Mayor Moss for a wonderful lunch. I grabbed a bag of cookies to bring home to my kids, but unfortunately, that bag did not make it to them. So thank you for providing that. I also want to commend the police department. As of late, we've put them in, you know, all eyes are on police in our country, and we, as a council, asked the department, and particularly the chief, to be in a position that can be difficult and listening to resident feedback and showing what it is that the police department is doing to be leaders and transparency. And I just want to commend them for the way that they have conducted themselves and the way that they are utilizing resident feedback and responding to resident feedback. Somebody made the comment about with talks of defunding, perhaps we ought to be talking about overfunding. And I really think there's something to that, the idea of looking at how we can change policing in a way that is positive for the residents, but also for the police officers so that we provide them with the mental health support and such that they need. So thank you again to the police department. And then I don't normally do this, but I am going to read a statement that I wrote and maybe just ask the council to consider in light of what we've passed tonight. Doesn't have to be my statement, but something like this that maybe we can release, kind of explaining where we come from, and these are my thoughts on where we come from. So I promise this is one of the rare times I'll read to you. "This week, we commemorate the 233rd anniversary of the adoption of the Constitution of the United States. The crafters of our nation's founding document outlined a system of government which has endured the trials of a civil war, the financial instability of economic depressions, and the devastation of two world wars. Embedded into the language of our Constitution and its accompanying Bill of Rights is a recognition of the supremacy of the individual and the dignity of every human being. While our nation's history demonstrates an imperfect attempt to live up to the ideals that led to the establishment of our republic and the entriement of liberty into our Constitution, it further reflects the tireless efforts of people of every race and creed to make real the Declaration of our founding that all men are created equal. Discrimination assaults these principles, relegating the notality of a person's individual identity to the prejudicial stereotypes that accompany some portion of who they are or who they are perceived to be. It denies individuals the opportunity to live their lives in accordance with their own dreams, replacing a meritocratic society in which a person is limited only by his or her own aspirations with the unjust burdens of prejudice and hate, which lead to unequal opportunity. Today, the Granville City Council reaffirms our belief in the ideals of our founding documents. Through the adoption of an anti-discrimination ordinance, we demonstrate our commitment to ensuring that every person who works, visits, and resides in our community is granted the dignity which accompanies their individual humanity. We say to businesses looking for a community to bring their workforce of diverse talent that our city is open for business. To families and individuals who wish to plant their roots in a community of civility and kindness, Granville is happy to be your home. And to all those who visit, work, eat, and shop within the boundaries of our city, we welcome you." So I'm very proud of the actions we've taken as a city tonight, and I just want to commend the council. Thank you.
Justin, appreciate that very much. Can I add my name to that statement? Are you allowing people to sign on to what you just said?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to contact Justin now or later? JR, I see your hand one up.
Absolutely, thank you, Justin.
Yeah, amen.
Great, thank you very much.
I disagree with the supremacy, the individual language, and I think that's libertarian ideology creeping into there, and so, no, I will not sign on to that.
Okay, Paul, I can tweak that if you would like, you know, to me.
Okay.
Okay, well, since it's my statement, I'll just clarify on that. And that, to me, is the reason discrimination is so terrible is because it does assault people's individuality. It looks at them in a collective form as a member of some group. And so that's why I had that language in there, but thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin. Josh?
Yeah, not a whole lot to add. I was going to thank the Vermelins and Mayor Moss for sponsoring the Buck Creek Cleanup. Friends of Buck Creek, it's nice to get out there. I also got out there with my son, and he had a good time and got a little bit dirty, and appreciate all the volunteers that put that together. Really is important for us to take care of our watershed and specifically Buck Creek, which runs right through the heart of our community. Also wanted to say thanks to Paul and Police Department, Mayor, City Manager Renee for kind of hosting and moderating the leasing forum a couple weeks ago. Seemed to be pretty well attended. I counted about 60 or 70 people that were there. It was also recorded by WCET and is available on their YouTube page if anybody missed it. But I thought it was a good discussion. About everyone was very respectful, and people were able to share their truth, share their thoughts, share their concerns, and also, you know, share ideas, and I just thought it was a really good community conversation, and everything was handled really well. And just appreciate the opportunity to be part of that and that we were able to do that. Hopefully, you know, one of our conversations to come. There's also a lot of really positive comments about our police department, their professionalism, so. Kudos to everybody that was involved with that.
Great. Anything else, Josh?
Oh, that was it. I was going to mention the Fourth of July Committee, too, but you already did that. So got it out on social media, and it's like people are showing their interest. I guess the one other quick thing I was just going to say is, I had talked to a couple of you guys just casually for the last couple of weeks, and I guess to Ken specifically, really getting tired of Zoom meetings. I'd really like us to somehow find a way to meet in person, you know, with social distancing, wear a mask, whatever. Other councils in the area have found a way to meet in person. I like meeting outdoors, but I know that's got some logistical challenges, weather can be an issue. And apparently, it's a bit expensive to get it all set up with the sound and everything. So whether it's at City Hall, whether it's at one of the schools in our auditorium or another facility that's larger that gives us more space for social distancing, I just would like us to explore how we can get back to meeting in person because I think the Zoom meetings really kind of hinder conversation and dialogue a bit. And I just think it's time to figure out how to make it work in person. Kids are in school with 20-plus kids in a classroom all day long. I think we can figure out how to do it with, you know, a few of us for an hour or two every couple of weeks, so. Just would like you to check into what our options are as far as getting back to some in-person meetings inside.
Like Marcy said, we're on it. We're working that way.
Thank you.
Hey, I don't know if I can add in, Ken. It's not really my opportunity for comments. But if we look into that, can we also look into how to incorporate Zoom into regular city council meetings as well? Whenever we are in person, I think there's a contingent of people who are showing up for these meetings and participating over Zoom when they wouldn't come in person. And I think there's a contingent to Josh's point who don't come on Zoom but would come in person. And I think it's a unique opportunity that as we think of our options moving forward, we can include both. There's got to be ways to include both, so. If you're going to be doing that, then I would love to have that bent added in as well.
Will do.
Great. I hate to jump in here as well, but Andy, I would echo that 100%. And, you know, if we need to create like a little mini task force to R&amp;R that from some other communities, obviously, R&amp;Rs rip off and repeat to see what other communities are doing to make it inclusive, especially with those huge TVs that we have now in our council chambers and upgrades to audio and all that stuff. I think we can make this work, and Josh has some great points about the power of meeting in person and what that looks like, but also including people who just don't feel comfortable yet leaving home or would rather just, you know, do this. That's cool, too. So I think we should explore all opportunities, and I'm glad you and Marcy are on it, Ken. Thank you.
Great, just a couple comments. Yeah, Buck Creek Cleanup was great, as always. Also, just wanted to really thank council and staff, everybody, from the bottom of my heart. Again, I think tonight's somewhat difficult conversation, maybe for some of us. Everybody is always so civil, and I appreciate that about this. It's one of the things I love about Granville, but especially appreciate working with this council. Thank you. Everyone always remains civil, and we moved through the material efficiently, and every voice was heard. I know City of Holland had a seven-hour meeting when they discussed their nondiscrimination ordinance. And I talked to the Holland mayor and talked to a couple people who were there, and I'm just very grateful that we moved through it civilly and expeditiously. So thank you very much. You know, I think this sends a message to folks that not only is there room for you here in Granville, but we're saying, come join us, come stand with us, come sit with us, and help make this community even stronger. So I appreciate that. Next item is, before we adjourn, we've been requested to have adjourned to a closed session. So I'm going to be making a motion here. I'll make a motion that we adjourn to a closed section, a closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act regarding the case of Outdoor One Communication LLC versus the City of Granville to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or the litigating or settlement position of the city. So I am making that motion to adjourn. So support? Or support? Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? Otherwise, before Marcy takes role, you've received a separate link to a closed session. So let's take five minutes after we sign off on this, and then we'll just all re-sign back up with the new passcodes. So a motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Tim Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Merengah.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes, and to all our guests, thank you very much for joining us here tonight. We appreciate it. And enjoy the rest of your evening. Councilmembers and Ken and Matt and Randy, I will see you in five minutes. Thanks.